There are 242 town meeting members. 122 constitutes a quorum. The constable informs me that a quorum is present. I think this is the earliest we've had a quorum of all the sessions of town meeting. So I will allow applause. Okay, but that's enough of that. The eighth session of the 257th Annual Town Meeting will now come to order. And our first order of business, once again. Clerk being absent, this meeting must elect a temporary clerk. I recognize Ms. Brewer for nomination.
I nominate Susan Audette as temporary clerk.
The nomination has been seconded. Hearing no other nominations, I declare the nominations closed and request that Ms. Brewer cast a single ballot for Sue Audette.
On behalf of Town Meeting, I cast a single ballot for Sue Audette.
Sue Audette has been elected temporary clerk for the session of the 2015 Annual Town Meeting. Ms. Audette, do you swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of town clerk? Say I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Quick schedule review. If we don't finish up tonight, we are scheduled to come back next Wednesday, May 27. Tally cards. When you checked in last week, you received a second set of tally cards numbered seven through 12. We used seven and eight on Monday, so the next card would be number nine. These cards do not have names printed on them. If we do have a tally vote, you will need to write your name legibly on your card before voting. If you forgot your cards this evening, please go to the check-in table now to get a blank set. Seats on the floor of the auditorium may be occupied by town meeting members only except for the front row, which may be used by members of the press or by members of town committees and staff participating in presentation. Such persons must wear non-voter stickers. Spectators and town residents who are not town meeting members may be seated in the bleachers to the rear of the auditorium. New information can be found on the back table to my left. I've been told that there is no new information tonight, which is very exciting. Old information can be found on the back table to my right. If you wish to speak, you must raise a hand to be recognized. When appropriate, please hold up green or red card to indicate pro or con on the issue. When you are called on, please first state your name and precinct. If you need more than three minutes to speak, or if you need more than five when speaking to a motion, you must request additional time before speaking, and Town Meeting will vote on your request. If you're speaking from the floor, please speak into a microphone that we provided. The microphone will be on when it is handed to you. Please hold it close to your mouth when you speak. Non-members who wish to speak should stand at the rear of the right-hand aisle. Any registered voter of the Town of Amherst who is recognized by the moderator may speak without special permission. Others may speak with the permission of a majority. If you're coming forward and you have a document to display on the overhead projector, please let our IT person know when you first reach the podium, and he will switch the screen settings. If you're making an amendment to a motion, the amendment must be presented in writing for a copy submitted to the front table. Procedural motions, such as a motion to refer or a motion to dismiss, do not need to be presented in writing. If you make any motion from the floor, it must be the first thing you do after you've been recognized and have identified yourself. You can't speak first and then make a motion. If you haven't already done so, please check your cell phone. Make sure it is silenced or off. If at any point in time you're confused about the proceedings, it is appropriate to call a point of order and ask for clarification. And we now begin with Article 28. Mr. O'Connor, did you want to make a motion now? I recognize Mr. O'Connor.
I move to reconsider Article 27.
Do I hear a second? I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
Monday evening, we heard a presentation from the Select Board which claimed that the deck of the Mill Street Bridge was 18 feet. And then having eliminated a certain number of feet because that part of the bridge was supported by stringers that were not usable by automobiles, that the proposed single-lane, two-way activity on that bridge, there wasn't sufficient room for it. The whole foundation of that argument was that the deck of the bridge was 18 feet. This afternoon, I went out and measured the bridge from the posts that support the railing on the east side of the bridge to the other side of the bridge. Seven posts, seven measurements. Every one of the measurements showed, one of them showed that the bridge was 20 feet, one inch. Every other measurement showed that the width of the bridge was 20 feet. The presentation by the Select Board was inaccurate. The conclusion that the Select Board presentation drew from the inaccurate information was not accurate. My view is that this kind of inaccuracy in a presentation to Town Meeting that proposes to dispose of the central theme of the article cannot be tolerated. I have no idea what would have happened if Town Meeting had not received this presentation, or if the presentation by the Select Board had used accurate numbers. Nor do I have any idea, nor have I called or talked to anyone about this matter before Town Meeting. But I do think that the Town Meeting should consider whether, and you all know what impact the Select Board presentation had on your vote. But I think the Town Meeting needs to hear that that presentation was inaccurate, and that there, in my opinion, there should be some penalty for making such an inaccurate presentation.
Mr. O'Connor, excuse me, second. We're not talking about penalties for anything in the past. You can talk about how you want to proceed moving forward and why you want to reconsider, but we're not talking about penalties here. Thank you.
In my view, with new information, I think the Town Meeting could reach a different conclusion about the viability of the content of the proposal under Article 27. That it is viable because there is sufficient width on the bridge. I urge the Town Meeting to reconsider Article 27 and as quickly as possible come to a conclusion as to whether to pass 27. Thank you very much.
Okay. Before we continue, let me just explain procedurally what's going on. So a motion has been made and seconded to reconsider 27. First of all, it's permissible because Mr. O'Connor voted with the majority on 27. He voted to refer 27, so he is allowed to make a motion to reconsider it. If the motion to reconsider, it's a majority vote first of all, and if it fails, we're done. If the motion to reconsider passes, then what would be on the floor of Town Meeting is the motion to refer Article 27 to the Planning Board and the Public Works Committee. In other words, the thing that was last passed is what we're reconsidering. So we'd again be discussing and voting on the motion to refer. If that passed, then we have the same outcome that we have now. If that failed, we are then voting on the main motion of requesting that the bridge be opened. Does that make sense to everybody? Good. Ms. Gruger.
Since I was the Select Board member who was just being referred to in my presentation about Article 27, I just want to tell you where the information came from. No, I did not go out and actually myself measure the width of the Mill Street Bridge. What I did do was meet with both the Superintendent of Public Works and the Chair of the Public Works Committee. The information that I was given in that meeting as I was preparing my remarks was that it was 18 feet wide. The Superintendent of Public Works was here the other night. He did not refute my presentation, or the petitioners claimed that it was, in fact, two feet wider. So the information that I presented was what I had to the best of my knowledge. I think my point was that the bridge would be very narrow. Adding two feet or some other potential expansion would still be problematic for many vehicles. Even the vehicles that could fit on the narrow, one-way bridge deck with the three-to-four-foot railings that are required, a vehicle could be on there and have a problem and not be able to fully open the doors or to fully be able to get out of the vehicle. There were many other safety considerations and many other deteriorated conditions of the bridge that went into my remarks, but I will concede that the bridge may in fact be 20 feet wide and not, as I stated, 18 feet wide.
Is there further discussion, or can we come to a vote on this? I do see a hand back there, yes. Identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry, Aaron Hayden, Precinct 8. I would like to remind myself that there were many arguments regarding this bridge, both ways. For me, the most significant one was the undermining of the piers. I don't know if anyone has gone there and looked at it, but the bridge has got its feet in the water. And what happens over the course of 50 years, of course, is the water eats away at it. We also heard that there were other problems with the bridge, that we couldn't get emergency vehicles across it. I used to drive a fire truck for eight years in town. I would never consider taking even the ambulance across that. We heard many arguments. We had, we may have heard other misstatements from other sources, but I think that we're all wise enough to understand the information that we're hearing, and I think we made a good vote.
I see no hands, so we will come to a vote on the motion to reconsider. Again, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's a majority. We now move on to Article 28, and I believe Mr. Gaddy's going to be making the motion. Sorry, was there?
Felicity Callahan, Precinct 9. You said you felt you heard a majority. Are you saying a majority, yes?
Yes, the moderator heard a majority.
So then we are going to reconsider it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
I totally misspoke. The moderator heard majority voting against reconsideration. A majority of no votes. Thank you. Now we move on to Article 28, and I believe Mr. Gaddy is making a motion.
Frank Gaddy, Precinct 8. I move on behalf of the article as it's written and would ask Joe Ronka, Town Meeting Member, to speak to it.
Okay, first, we need a second.
Second.
I hear a second. Motion was made in terms of the article. And Mr. Ronka, you have five minutes to speak. You're not, time hasn't started yet, so you can walk to the.
I had just too many slides in that handout, so I'm going to just give a talk.
Okay.
The slides will take too long.
Just be close to the microphone.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Joseph Ronka from Precinct 6. I'm also a professor at Springfield College. I've been teaching human rights for a number of years. I represent social work at the United Nations in Geneva, and I just came back from Pakistan and Austria doing human rights workshops as a fulbright, if I may. And brief that warrant article asks the Town of Amherst to call upon key policymakers, including but not limited to President Obama, Senator Warren, Samantha Power, Ambassador to the UN, to sign, ratify, and implement United Nations Human Rights Conventions as they presently exist and evolve. Sadly, as some of you know, the United States has a very poor record here, having ratified only three of the nine major conventions, which can be found on the PowerPoints, and I'll get to that later. Again, they've ratified conventions pertaining to racism, torture, and civil and political rights, but there are others. A major case in point is the United States' failure to ratify the rights of the child, which the President has said is shameful. He needs a nudge, and we can give it to him. Now, Pakistan and Austria, where I came from, have ratified eight of the nine conventions, and many other countries have similar records. An impetus for this article is in part to assist in regaining United States leadership in the realm of global ethics, as after all, it was President Roosevelt's Four Freedoms speech in 1941 that are immortalized in the paintings of Western Massachusetts Norman Rockwell, which called upon governments to guarantee freedoms of expression, the right to worship, and freedoms from want and fear. These principles were major pillars that formed the United Nations. And later, his wife, Eleanor Roosevelt, leader of the U.S. delegation to the UN and chairperson of the drafting committee for the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, was a strong supporter of what has become known as economic, social, and cultural rights, like employment, health care, and security in old age. Many people don't know this, but the United States delegation to the United Nations at that time defined the right to employment as meaningful and gainful work that is socially useful, contributes to the development of the human personality, and increases purchasing power. It's not the nonsense we have now. If you work one hour a week, they count you as employed. It's bizarre. Another impetus is this article, that it should serve as a kind of educative function in this world's second decade of human rights education. Many people don't know it, but Article 6 of the U.S. Constitution, the Supremacy Clause, says, "All treaties made shall become the supreme law of the land." And all United Nations conventions are international treaties. Ramsey Clark, former United States Attorney General, has stated that the lack of knowledge of that fact represents a failure of the legal system. It's also important to know about what's called the Human Rights Triptych. Maestro? Now you have here the Universal Declaration of Human Rights at the center. Five crucial notions: human dignity, nondiscrimination, civil and political rights, economic, social, and cultural rights, solidarity rights. The United States Constitution only mentions civil and political rights, so we're only like 20 percent there. Nothing on health care, nothing on shelter, which are economic rights, or solidarity rights, which is the right to peace. Okay? Now over on the right are conventions that further talk about what the declaration is, and as you can see, we only have three of them, that we've ratified. And once they're ratified, they become law. And then at the United Nations, you implement them by filing, you see on the far left there, reports to human rights committees, thematic reports, et cetera. I got to move on, all right? So you can see where we have a lot to go. We have to include economic, social rights. We have to include solidarity rights. We have to ratify all these conventions. And then we have to implement the reports on the left. Recent report on racism, for example, asked the United States to look further at racial profiling and increased militarized approach to immigration law enforcement and Hispanic children particularly facing harsh conditions enforced agricultural labor. Furthermore, people need to know that rights are independent and indivisible. What is freedom of speech to a person who is homeless and lives in a world at war? The United States, by the way, has rejected the notion of the interdependency of rights, citing the priority of civil and political rights. This attitude needs to change. And human rights instruments, as St. John Paul II said, "need to be lived in letter and in spirit." Thus, human dignity, nondiscrimination, and ethics of human rights for every person everywhere need to be lived in our minds and hearts and dragged into our everyday lives.
Mr. Ronka, if you could finish up.
That's it. Okay. We may not see the results now, but if you believe in intergenerational solidarity, eventually our children and their children will reap the fruits of the human rights culture. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter for the Select Board. Mr. Wal for the Select Board.
Select Board voted four to zero with one abstention to support this measure.
Thank you. Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted five to zero with two absent to make no recommendation on this article, simply because we didn't see any financial implications for the Town directly.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. And is there further discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. We will now vote on Article 28. The motion is in terms of the article. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Moderator hears a majority in favor. The article passes. We now move on to Article 29, and I call on Amber Casey to make the motion.
Hi, I'm Amber Casey, Precinct 5. I move in acceptance of Article 29, which would declare the second Sunday in June to be Race Amity Day, and urge the Amherst community to recognize and celebrate this day.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, and Mr. Elliott will be speaking to the motion. And do you want to speak in your place there? Do you want to come up to the podium? Just take care of the wires there.
I'm Ray Elliott, and I am the founder of Citizens for Race Amity now. And our group has asked the Town to approve our proclamation declaring the second Sunday of June as Race Amity Day. The Select Board has already recommended it, and the voters, the League of Voters, the women voters, has unanimously supported and agreed with it. And a lot of questions have been asked me here, so why do we need another day to celebrate something? What is it about? How important is it? Well, it's about reflection, to reflect on how we treat each other and how we relate to each other, day by day. And also to reflect on other things which are really the foundation of breaking down barriers. And that is to reflect on the moral and the scientific truth of the oneness of the human family, that there's only one race, the human race. And reach out to each other with the spirit of amity. Now, people ask me, what is amity? It's a strange name. It's friendship. And all through history, that friendship has been very important in making advances, breaking down barriers throughout history. The Civil Rights Movement, collaborating with those not of color, and Harriet Tubman, and friendship with the Quakers. It's extremely important friendships to help us to work together, because we can't do it alone. We have to learn how to work together to break down these barriers between cultural and all kinds of barriers. And so what we are hoping, oh, and one of the things that we should be aware of, that the greater Boston, the Metropolitan Boston, 12 towns last year proclaimed that day, the second Sunday in June, to be Race Amity Day. And the governor of this country, of the governor of the state also proclaimed with executive order last year to celebrate this day, and celebrate the day. So what they're, we're hoping, and there is a campaign to do this, to have all 360 towns in Massachusetts to eventually celebrate and establish the second Sunday of June. And hopefully, we can do that. There are many other things I should share with you, but we flashed up on here our proclamation. And the reason we come to you, because you represent the citizens, the people of this Town. And we want this to be a people's proclamation, and a call to all the communities and neighborhoods of the Town to come together and celebrate our humanity, the oneness of the human family. There are other issues that I wanted to share with you, but my friend that was going to assist me, since I'm legally blind, was not able to make it tonight. But I think that I have covered most of the issues. And one of the things I do must say is, there is an old saying that if you tell me a fact, I will believe it. But if you tell me a truth, I'll live it. And so that's what we're trying to do, to live our beliefs and our truths, the truths that we know. And this is a time that, and our group is trying to help the community to come together and share with not just each other, but all, everybody, our neighbors, our friends, other people throughout the community, that we are one people, and that we should be put in action and act that way. I think I've covered most of the area that we wanted to share with you with support of this proclamation. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask at this point, any questions?
Yeah, we're going to hear from a couple boards, then we will open it up to discussion if there is any. Thank you. So Ms. Brewer for the Select Board.
The Select Board was happy to recommend this motion. As some of you are no doubt aware, typically, the Select Board in this community does do proclamations. And so we have a letter that we sign that a lot of people have put a lot of thought into, and we may have a small or medium-sized ceremony that may or may not involve a flag and is usually held in Town Hall. And then the event kind of goes away until the following year. So this was a little unusual, to have this come as a Town Meeting warrant article, but we also understood the presentation that Mr. Elliott just gave. And given the number of issues we've been dealing with in our community that have brought renewed focus to our ways to talk about race in this community, the fact that this organization has been around in our community and has been helping facilitate those conversations for over a year, made it clear that this made a lot of sense to have it on a Town Meeting warrant and have it be something that everybody in the community should be thinking about and finding ways to help recognize. We do not, at this point, know of a particular event that's been scheduled associated with this date in June, but we certainly hope that we can all help support anything that might come up. And I do know that there's a Human Rights Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday night at 6:30, and the Human Rights Commission often contributes to helping organize and participate in events like this. So that would be another place to contact and to work directly with Mr. Elliott. So we hope you support this article.
Thank you. Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted five to zero with two absent to make no recommendation, but simply because there was no financial dimension to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So this will require a majority vote. The motion is before you, is in terms of the article. Is there further discussion before we come to a vote? And I see one hand in the back there.
I just wanted to, Aaron Hayden, Precinct 8. I wanted to offer my appreciation to Mr. Elliott's presentation and request of us this evening. I am looking forward to answering, I'm looking forward to the challenge of answering the question that all of us are now going to be asked as to what is amity? Not only of people who ask me, but of myself.
Is there further discussion before a vote? Yes, I see a hand there.
Leo Mailey, Precinct 5. I support this greatly and appreciate the presentation and its thoroughness, but I do have just one question, which is why the second Sunday in June? I assume that it was not chosen randomly, and we just didn't hear that. I know there's a reason.
Mr. Elliott, do you have an answer for that?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason why is because in 1921, in Washington, D.C., when the aftermaths of the Red Sunday in 1999 was still in effect, there was a group of very wealthy, rich, white women who got together, blacks, to come together, which was really not heard of under the environment, the atmosphere that occurred at that time. And they brought together people from all colors, and they became friends. And this was a really groundbreaking thing that happened. colors, and they became friends. And this was a really groundbreaking thing that happened in Washington, D.C. in 1921. And it happened on the second Sunday that they had this Race Amity Conference in Washington, D.C. And so we now have a National Center for Race Amity established four years ago in Boston, in Wheelock College. So they're revisiting the same Race Amity Day celebration, and that is the reason that it was still held on the second Sunday.
Thank you. Is there further discussion before a vote? Yes, I see a hand on the aisle here.
Lydia Vernon Jones, Precinct 5. Mr. Elliott, there's no date of what year we're talking about. Are you asking us to make this a yearly celebration, or are we just talking about 2015?
Mr. Elliott?
Well, we'd love to have it established per curatory, but I don't know if that's possible.
I should point out that the article says celebrate its annual observance. So that's the wording in the article. So it's not just this year, but an annual observance. Is there further discussion? I see no hands. We're ready to come to a vote. Again, this requires a majority. The motion is in terms of the article, which is before you. All those in favor of the motion under Article 29, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Moderator here is unanimous vote. And we now move on to Article 30. And I call on Alice Swift to make the motion. There you are.
Alice Swift, Precinct 7. I move in terms of the article. And I'd like you to call on Rudy Perkins.
Yes, Rudy Perkins will be speaking to the motion. And Mr. Perkins, you have five minutes.
Mr. Moderator, Rudy Perkins, could I request one additional minute?
Without objection, Mr. Perkins asks for an additional minute, and it is granted.
Thank you. The main effect of the adoption of Article 30 would be to put the town on record as opposed to the Kinder Morgan Pipeline, also known as the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, or the Northeast Energy Direct Pipeline, and other such new pipelines in the Commonwealth. It would also put the town on record as opposed to any tariff on ratepayers to support such pipeline construction, a tariff that has recently been revived by the governor as a possibility. It also asks our representatives and the governor to oppose both such pipeline construction and that kind of tariff. This is a locally significant issue, appropriate for town meeting action. It's locally significant by the concern that's been expressed in the town about this. Fifty-seven town meeting members co-signed a letter to the Select Board recommending adoption of this proposal. The Select Board then voted four to zero in favor of adoption of this. The Amherst League of Women Voters endorsed the adoption of this article. So we can see there's quite a bit of concern about the Kinder Morgan Pipeline in our community. It's a locally significant issue because of the possible tariff, which could affect nearly every ratepayer in the Commonwealth, whether they live on the pipeline route or not, getting, reaching into their pockets and pulling out our hard-earned money to support the investment in this pipeline that will be owned by the subsidiary, privately owned by the subsidiary of $125 billion corporation, Kinder Morgan. It's a locally significant issue because every legislator will likely be asked to waive the protections, the constitutional protections of Article 97, that protects much of our conservation land in this state to allow the pipeline to go through portions of such constitutionally protected conservation land. That requires a two-thirds vote in both houses of the legislature, so every vote will be critical. And thus, it's very important that every community we can get to adopt such resolutions to guide their legislators, and of course, in our case, Representative Story and Senate President Rosenberg, to vote the right way in terms of Article 97 requests, and also to take a stand on this pipeline and on the tariff. This obviously has a lot of problems with it, the Kinder Morgan Pipeline. And I don't have time to go through all of the economic and environmental problems with it. We tried to sketch them in the fact sheet that was distributed to all of you. I hope you had a chance to take a look. But let me underscore a couple of key points. We now understand the significant climate impact of methane, the main component of natural gas, in a way that we didn't even five or 10 years ago. It's having a much larger climate impact than we thought, as it leaks from drilling sites and gas pipelines, and of course, as it's burned and converted to carbon dioxide. It has 20 times the impact, pound for pound, of carbon dioxide. So it's a very significant impact, and that means that natural gas is a very significant fossil fuel in terms of climate impact. The pipeline would be a 50- to 100-year investment in massive fossil fuel infrastructure, shipping up to twice, nearly twice, what our state burns each year in natural gas for decades to come. Thus, it is not a short-term bridge to a renewable energy future, but a long-term highway to continued fossil fuel combustion. We are past the point in the climate crisis where we can afford this kind of investment, massive investment, in long-term commitment to fossil fuels. On top of the climate impact, we have the growing understanding that we are dangerously overrelying on natural gas. Even ISO New England, our grid operator, is beginning to worry about the fact that a single pipeline going out could take out thousands of megawatts of New England's electricity generation, and of course, heating in many of our homes. We are getting too dependent on natural gas, and we need to diversify. We've seen this vulnerability locally, with Berkshire Gas declaring a three-and-a-half-year minimum moratorium on new hookups unilaterally and on an accelerated basis. And so we've seen the risk of having a single pipeline company with a single pipeline that's in turn supplied by a single pipeline company, Tennessee Gas Pipeline, and its single pipeline, in terms of safeguarding our energy futures. Again, we need to move away from natural gas. And perhaps the final insult to the injury of this pipeline is that much of the gas that would move through it would probably not go to New England consumers, but would move to LNG export facilities in Canada and be shipped overseas to foreign consumers. So all of the disruption, the payments from our pockets potentially, the conflict in our community would go to benefit, perhaps, primarily, other people outside the country and their energy needs, not ours. We have alternatives to get us through to the renewable energy future. I tried to outline those in my letter to Senate President Rosenberg, a short form of which was given to you all or distributed at the back. The climate crisis is real, it's urgent. I don't think I have to convince any of you about that. It's time now for us to join our sister communities in a call for a new path to a sustainable future by voting for Article 30. Thank you.
And Mr. Slaughter for the Select Board, Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
Yeah, thank you. As Mr. Perkins indicated, the Select Board voted on April 6, four to zero, with one member absent to support this article. It's not a simple matter, and I really appreciate Mr. Perkins' work on it and the presentation that he made. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is the principal agency charged with making the decision on this, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities will have some role as regarding if there's a pipeline built approval to the hookups to the pipeline. The idea that we should express our views to the commission as, through this resolution, and to our elected officials was what we were considering and are considering tonight. There is a shortage of natural gas supply in Amherst, which is what makes it a little bit more complicated. The current price of gas has encouraged the use of gas for the generation of electricity and building heating. And as you heard, Berkshire Gas has imposed a moratorium on new hookups, which has an effect on local businesses, local residents, the town, because we've actually converted some of our buildings to natural gas, and it has an impact on several businesses that have been permitted, but unable to open because they were planning to rely on natural gas. However, when it came down to it, what we also recognized is that the allocation of the current supply of gas is not related to decision whether to construct a pipeline. It would not serve any customers for at least several years, and it's unclear whether the pipeline, if built, would significantly increase the supply available in western Massachusetts, as, and again, as Mr. Perkins pointed out, would carry gas to eastern Massachusetts. We cannot ignore the reality that shale oil, or that shale is a source of the production of a lot of this energy, and that there's huge environmental consequences to production of gas from shale. Finally, I'd like to point out that at the recent UMass commencement, astronomer Neil deGrasse Tyson was the speaker, and he explained to the UMass graduates that the sun is a limitless energy source, what's in the ground is not. Amherst is committed to green energy, we're a green community, we're doing what we reasonably can to promote use of solar energy. The motion before you is consistent with our green community principles, and that's why the Select Board recommends this to you.
Thank you. Mr. Braun for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. So this is a non-binding resolution, so it doesn't have any direct financial impact on the town. But the ultimate goal of the resolution is to stop the pipeline. So the Finance Committee undertook some research into the possible financial impacts of blocking the pipeline. Amherst citizens, as you've already heard, and the town are feeling the effects of a regional shortage of natural gas. The basic cause is the move by electrical utilities away from burning coal and oil to burning natural gas. The gas shortage has caused Berkshire Gas to place a moratorium on new natural gas services in Amherst and surrounding towns. Among other things, that's meant that one town effort to replace an aging oil-burning furnace with a natural gas furnace has been shelved. Whether Berkshire Gas is positioned as part of a calculated strategy to build support for the pipeline is unknown. It's possible, but we don't know. But an independent report published earlier this year on New England's natural gas infrastructure concluded that demand is, in fact, outstripping supply, leading to higher costs, both for the gas itself and the electricity generated by such gas. Increasing the gas supply with a new pipeline, therefore, might result in lower prices, although that would depend in part on how the pipeline is financed. If the town or the state are forced to help pay for the pipeline, any cost advantages might be negated. Because the financial implications of either building or blocking the pipeline are so difficult to predict, and because a decision on the pipeline involves many other issues besides money, the Finance Committee voted five to zero with two absent to make no recommendation on this article.
Thank you. This will require a majority vote to pass. I have a few people who have asked to be recognized, so we'll recognize them first. Ms. Hanner for the League of Women Voters.
I am Martha Hanner from the Amherst League of Women Voters. The Amherst League of Women Voters supports Article 30. The League supports environmentally sound policies that reduce energy growth rates, emphasize energy conservation, and encourage the use of renewable resources. League positions are adopted after members study issues, and there is general agreement or consensus among members. And we do have an energy committee that is working to study these issues. Construction of the proposed TGP pipeline would cut an environmentally destructive path across productive farmland, forests, and conservation land in western Massachusetts. It would also lock independence on fracked natural gas for many decades. The large diameter and high capacity of the proposed pipeline far exceed even the highest projected future demand for natural gas in Massachusetts. The pipeline would link the Marcellus shale gas fields in Pennsylvania with the Maritimes and Northeast Pipeline to Canada. These facts indicate that the main purpose of the proposed pipeline is for exporting Marcellus shale gas, not for serving Massachusetts' needs. Thus, any tax or tariff imposed on Massachusetts' ratepayers would be subsidizing a private, for-profit enterprise with only minor benefit to Massachusetts residents. Natural gas is used primarily for electricity generation and residential heating. In the case of electricity in Massachusetts, it is only the peak demand on certain days of the year, for example, when everyone's running their air conditioners, is projected to be above current capacity. The League believes that energy conservation and renewable energy are the first priority, green buildings, energy-efficient appliances, wind generation, et cetera, and that far more can be done to reduce reliance on fossil fuel sources. Before undertaking any new natural gas pipeline construction project, objective analysis of Massachusetts' future energy needs must be carried out, taking into account the trends in energy conservation and the growth of renewable energy sources. Moreover, a careful analysis of existing gas pipeline infrastructure must be conducted, including the capacity of the local feed lines. For these reasons, the Amherst League of Women Voters urges your support for Article 30. The benefit of the proposed TGP pipeline to Massachusetts residents is small, and the environmental and economic price high. Thank you.
And Lisa Selkirk has asked to be recognized. I'm not sure if she's here. Yes, there you are. And Ms. Selkirk is a registered voter in the town of Amherst.
Yes. Could I have two extra minutes?
Ms. Selkirk has requested two extra minutes for a total of five. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Yes, you may have two extra minutes.
I also have some overhead projector need, so yeah, if we could change the screen. So my name is Lisa Selkirk from Precinct 9. I'm one of the co-petitioners for the anti-pipeline resolution. In my comment here, I want to provide two reasons based on the current regional context in our own Pioneer Valley, for thinking it would be politically effective for Amherst Town Meeting to take a vote against the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. First, by voting against the pipeline, Amherst can make common cause with other towns in Hampshire and Franklin Counties who have already voted against the pipeline. These anti-pipeline towns include... Can you reduce the magnification a little bit? Now, can you just enlarge it now a little bit here? I mean, the main thing is, this list. Okay, so the anti-pipeline towns include, in Hampshire County, Palom, Northampton, Chesterfield, Worthington, Covington, and Plainfield. In Franklin County, Leverett, Sunderland, Greenfield, Deerfield, Montague, Gill, Northfield, Warwick, Orange, Wendell, Conway, Ashfield, Shelburne, and Buckland. The towns that are written in italics are those that are on the currently proposed route for the TGB pipeline. The others are not, obviously. And towns with an asterisk are in Senator Rosenberg's legislative district. These are the towns which Amherst can join in exerting pressure on our state senator to... Okay, Berkshire Gas imposed this national gas moratorium on eight towns in Hampshire and Franklin Counties: Greenfield, Deerfield, Montague, Sunderland, Whately, Hatfield, Hadley, and Amherst. In their press release of March 27th, Berkshire Gas stated that the moratorium will remain in effect until the Tennessee Gas Pipeline is permitted and built at the earliest November 2018. Of the eight natural gas moratorium towns, four have already voted against the pipeline: Greenfield, Deerfield, and Montague in summer 2014, and Sunderland on April 24, 2015, after the imposition of the moratorium. A vote against the pipeline by Amherst would lend important strength to the opposition to the moratorium. I finish by asking you to consider three questions regarding the Berkshire Gas Moratorium, the last question to be decided tonight by Amherst Town Meeting. The first question is, is a natural gas moratorium truly needed? Evidence suggests that it may not be. I refer you in this connection to the information on Berkshire Gas activity that's collected in a letter from my colleague Rudy Perkins, sent to Town Manager Muzante and Select Board Chair Brewer on April 23rd. I have an additional copy here with me that I'll offer to perhaps anybody who is interested, actually, the Finance Committee perhaps. In this context, my second, my next question is, shouldn't Amherst join with the other moratorium towns and try to negotiate alternative solutions to any real current problems in natural gas supply? And the third question for Town Meeting is, shouldn't Amherst join the other anti-pipeline moratorium towns in sending a message to Berkshire Gas or public utility that it opposes construction of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline and any other such long-term natural gas infrastructure? I leave for your consideration an overhead image of the Moratorium Ultimatum that was published by Berkshire Gas in the Hampshire Gazette, to my knowledge, at least twice in the last few weeks. The Moratorium towns with which Amherst could make common cause are highlighted in red. This is what you might refer to as an advertisement. I don't know if you would refer to it as an ad for Berkshire Gas. This is its announcement of the moratorium. So, you see, well, I'll leave it on the overhead. You can do with you will. I'm finished with my comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Hayden has asked to be recognized.
Precinct Eight. I move to dismiss the article.
Motion to dismiss has been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
This is very tough. I hope that you've all read, and I really appreciate Mr. Perkins' efforts in all this. I hope you've all read the information that's available to us about the ravening effects that big energy has on the world's environment and the local damage that this pipeline will make, have on us. Most importantly, though, it's clear, and again, this evidence that we have been presented makes it clear, that the actions that we take today do have a long-term effect and will set us on a course. And in this case, will keep us on a rather destructive course as far as the environment goes. Town Meeting has, in the past decade, done a lot of amazing work in the energy front. We have passed a climate action plan. In fact, we voted a majority to pass that plan. We have become a member of the green communities in the state of Massachusetts. We have hired an energy czar. There's a third thing that we've done that I'm very proud of, and I can't recall right at the moment. And these articles have worked. The developers have stepped up, and they've built for us much more efficient houses as they're required, and much more efficient buildings generally. The town has stepped up, and our use of energy has decreased. The town's use of energy has decreased. The institutions, the major institutions in town, have stepped up the climate action plan, and they have reduced their use of energy, even as they grow. We, I came in, as I came in this afternoon to the meeting, I couldn't help to notice the irony that there are fewer Priuses in the parking lot than in any other meeting, and that all of the other cars, except for two or three more, were SUVs and vans. Our footprint, the footprint of a home, of a one unit of living, continues to grow year after year in town. We have air conditioners with our condensers on the south side of the building. We have air conditioning at all. It is a fine thing to stamp our feet and pout and complain about pipelines going here and there and the destruction of big energy. But, the actions that we take today are much more important. Kinder Morgan is going to laugh all the way to the bank if we continue in our profligate use of energy. This article lets me off the hook. There's no mention in here of what I have to do. And I'm sorry, but I have that to offer.
Thank you. The motion before us is now a motion to dismiss, which also requires a majority. Hang on, let me just explain procedurally what's going on.
Do you have the motion on the screen?
Yeah, sure. If you can get back, just put in writing that it's motion to dismiss. There we go. If we vote in favor, then we have dismissed, and we've disposed of Article 30. If we vote no on dismissal, then we're back to the main motion, which is in terms of the article. Is there further discussion? Yes, right in the front row here.
Dre Weis, Precinct Eight. I vehemently oppose dismissal. I agree with Mr. Hayden that there is a lot more that we can do individually, and a lot more than we are doing, and there's a lot more we should be doing. However, this article does not make us do more. This article is one thing we can do. I don't think we can go home and say, oh, good, we've done it all now. We can drive our SUVs and heat our houses to 70 degrees because we did this great article. But dismissing it doesn't accomplish anything in terms of changing that situation. So, I hope we vote this down and vote for the article. I would like to make one more comment about the Finance Committee's comments. They did a fine microanalysis of the situation, and I understand why they came to their conclusion on a micro level. On a macro level, as we have heard and read for years and years, the effect of burning fossil fuels is going to have, if we believe, as I do, in the concept of global warming. It's going to have catastrophic financial, economic, social, and health effects on our population and on the world. Therefore, on a macro level, the burning of continued fossil fuels, and this pipeline is one example of a massive idea of burning fossil fuels, will have profound economic effects on our town and the world.
Yes, down there in the front row.
Denise Barber at Precinct Nine, and I'd like to add some comments that are slightly different from what the previous speaker said, but I certainly agree with what he says. I think one of the things that has not been brought up tonight is that this is also about property rights. Property rights of the property owners who will have their land and sometimes their livelihood, such as Clarkdale Orchards in South Deerfield, excuse me, in Deerfield, who will have their rights directly affected. And I think it's very important that we stand in solidarity with those people who are going to be directly affected.
Yes, the third row from the back there.
Janet Keller, Precinct One. I too stand in vigorous opposition to the idea of dismissing this article, and I hope you will stand with me. In addition to the reasons cited by the other speakers for not dismissing this article and for voting in favor of the resolution, I would add the property rights of the people who are not so close to us, but who are, who will be harmed grievously by the fracking of the gas and the destruction of their water systems and the landscape around them, and in some cases, their very own property. So, there are many, many reasons why we should support this resolution, and I hope you'll vote against the article to dismiss. Thanks a lot.
Further discussion? Ready to come to a vote on the motion to dismiss? Yes, I see a hand back there.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct One. The motion assumes that, I think illogically, that every statement that we make about energy needs to be sort of in the form of a unified field theory. I don't believe that's the case. I think we can all... I don't think the closing of the Mount Tom Coal Plant or the Vernon Nuclear Plant encouraged people to buy SUVs instead of Priuses. I don't think that's a logical conclusion, or that they gave up their concerns about global climate change. I think this is a specific article aimed at a specific fossil fuel project, which I think is demonstrably destructive, both to property rights, the planet's future, and to, really, to the pocketbooks in all likelihood of every citizen or ratepayer in the Commonwealth. We should not vote for the motion to dismiss. We should vote for the article. Thank you.
Yes, right here.
Larry Kelly, Precinct Five. I think if everyone who came here tonight in a motor vehicle votes in favor of this, it'll pass overwhelmingly.
Yes, I see a hand back there.
Leo Maylie, Precinct Five. I just, I'll speak quickly. I just want to thank the folks who brought this to us via petition. Resolutions, like the other resolutions we've dealt with tonight, I mean, and that have passed overwhelmingly unanimously, are good acts in that it provides essentially an educational service to anyone watching this on TV, or us here, or whomever. As part of the campaign, obviously, folks have been seeing articles in the newspaper, op-eds, letters to the editor, public meetings, and all of these other communities with various forms of governance: Northampton, a city council, most of those others, open town meetings, Greenfield, a city council. That part of what we do as legislative bodies, whether we're at this local level, all the way up to Congress, is pass resolutions. Some can be quite silly, you know, national, I'm just making one up, you know, Hot Dog Day, or Appreciation Day, or something. We hear about those things. But I think all of the resolutions we get here at Town Meeting have had some real seriousness to them, so I appreciate that. As to the motion to dismiss, I actually want to really thank the person who made the motion for making the motion and for speaking so articulately to his reasoning, such that it is very clear that at least the individual, and I think the rest of us, know what to do, and that we aren't off the hook. And so, the ability to both make a clear statement on behalf of the community, which is what we're elected to do, and our ability, I hope, to walk and chew gum at the same time, as difficult as that can be, I both support everything that the motion to dismiss presenter said, and yet urge the overwhelming support for the article itself.
Ready to come to a vote. Yes, I see a hand in the middle there.
Gordon Freed, Precinct Six. I'm not sure exactly how to vote on this article, either on the motion or the original article. I want to remind everybody that we live in a very tiny world. There's lots of energy that we need, us and the rest of the world needs. The question is, what is the cleanest energy that we can provide for the most of the world? Is it coal, of which the United States has an overwhelming supply? Is it nuclear? Is it wind? Is it solar? Is it gas? Or is it oil? And I think it's an extremely complicated question, and more than I have been able to figure out for myself.
Ready for a vote? Yes, Mr. Perkins.
I'd like to also say that I agree with the sentiments of the maker of the motion, but I'd like people to weigh what, how it will be interpreted, unfortunately. The subtleties that have been raised and the personal responsibility that we should all take for addressing this climate crisis are important points, and I'm glad they were raised. But it will be interpreted, in a little sound bite, that this article opposing a massive fossil fuel infrastructure was dismissed by the town of Amherst. And that will be interpreted, unfortunately, I think, as we should continue on the current path, not make any profound shift in how we get our energy, or what we do to conserve, whether personally or as a society. So, I hope we do not dismiss this article. A lot of people have raised this, and I think it deserves a vote on the merits. Thanks.
Ready to come to a vote on the motion to dismiss? I see no hands, so we will now come to a vote. This requires a majority. If a majority vote yes, we will dismiss Article 30. If a majority vote no, then Article 30 will still be on the floor. All those in favor of the motion to dismiss Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. Article 30 is now on the floor. The motion is in terms of the article. Is there further discussion before we come to a vote? I hear a point of order. Identify yourself, please.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct One. Will it be the moderator's position that, as with a number of other articles that are addressed to our legislators, that we should have a vote recording the numbers for and against? Would that be your position?
No, it is not. If it's requested by Town Meeting, it is done, but otherwise, it is not necessary. Is there further discussion? Yes, I see a hand, third row center there.
Steve Bloom, Precinct Ten. Can I ask Mr. Perkins a question of information?
You can ask a question to the floor, and Mr. Perkins may raise his hand to answer.
Is a universal moratorium legal? I've always wanted to know that, by Berkshire Gas. Can you just do that?
Okay. Mr. Perkins, would you care to answer that? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, you may step forward.
I hope that's a question that's being looked at. I don't know the answer to the question of whether this was a legal action. I think there's a lot of reasons why it should not have been done, was not necessary. I'd be happy to talk to people at some point about all the alternatives that I believe Berkshire Gas had to address its capacity issue in this Northampton lateral and the feed lines that feed Amherst. They had a lot of opportunities to do other things. Whether it was legal what they did, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Further discussion before a vote? I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on Article 30. Majority is required to pass. All those in favor of the motion in terms of the question under Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Aye.
Excuse me. If, excuse me, if a tally vote is requested, and requested by 15 people, we will have it.
Whether it was legal, what they did, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Further discussion before a vote. I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on Article 30. Majority is required to pass. All those in favor of the motion in terms of the question under Article 30, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Excuse me. If, excuse me, if a tally vote is requested, and requested by 15 people, we will have it. It's the rules of Town Meeting. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Yes, we have 15. We'll have a tally vote. Do I have six tellers? It is, hang on. Before I do anything else, I want to make sure I have six tellers. So do I have two over on the left? Yes. And do I have two on the right? And I have two in the center. Tally vote number nine. You must print your name on your tally vote, or it must, will not be counted. You must stay in your seat until you are released by the teller. There are 134 votes in favor and seven votes opposed. The motion passes. Ms. Brewer, do you have a motion for us?
I do. A microphone. I move to dissolve the 2015 annual Town Meeting.
This is not debatable. It's been seconded. All those in favor of dissolving the Town Meeting, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Town Meeting is dissolved. Thank you, everybody.